We're gonna get started here. Check it out.
Good evening and welcome to the Village of Webster Board Meeting, August 8, 2019. I would ask you all to stand and redo in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our first item tonight is a public comment, and so at this particular time, I will open the floor to anyone who wishes to address the board on the comment. The podium states your name and talk if you'd like.
Robert Anderson, 39 Elm Street. Just have a few questions regarding this consolidation decision, whether to do it or not to do it. So even though there has been little or no communication to the village taxpayers regarding this large expenditure, this still seems to be a very simple decision based on the little information that some of us have. I'm not sure why it has taken almost two years for the village government to pull together the facts, communicate with the village taxpayers, and communicate with the town, and make a decision on this multimillion dollar project. You have known for two years that a decision needed to be made so that the town or the village could apply for grants and coordinate the projects. My first question is a second request for feedback to a question asked over a month ago. Xerox contributes 60 percent of the wastewater treatment revenue, as I understand it. If you decide not to consolidate, do you have a plan to replace this revenue source if Xerox leaves the area or downsizes? Do you have this potential loss of revenue in the numbers you pulled together for this exercise? I'm assuming you don't, but can you tell me whether you do or don't?
If you'd like, I'll try and learn whatever you don't say.
Right, the numbers that are showing in the report would not reflect if Xerox was not here.
No, that would be a big miss, I would think. So instead of waiting on your answers, I'll just go through it since I only have five minutes, and then I'll give you a copy and you can respond back to us. So if you don't consolidate, is the $500,000 in the wastewater treatment plant owes the general fund included in your numbers as well? Also, what happens to this debt if you do not consolidate? How much does the village owe the town based on the interminable agreement? I have heard it's in excess of $250,000. Is that true? Will the village owe the town for anything else based on the town's wastewater treatment plan upgrades? Are there any new vehicles or equipment that need to be purchased or other upgrades to this facility, meaning the village, that will need to be completed if you decide not to consolidate? How about, I guess it's a bacon truck, is that how you say that? That has a cost of approximately $350,000. Are these expenditures included in your numbers? If you decide not to consolidate, we, the village taxpayers, or some of us who have been involved in reviewing things, do not believe that the $5.1 million is an accurate cost for all the upgrades and equipment needed to complete the village upgrade project. A number of more than $12 million has been tossed around. We'd like to know what the real number is. So you've said it's 5.1 million, but that's only a portion of it. As we understand, there's a lot more that needs to be done. That's where a $12 million number is being.
What was the total of approximately 12 million? Is the initial investment was 5 million? The town has recommended that there be a second
Filter.
First wind filter, and that's approximately 1.8. So it'd be about 6.8 to 7 million dollars. And then in the year 2030, there was at that time proposed upgrades based upon the needs at that time placed out to them. That's about 3 million. And 2035, approximately 2 million more. So the 12 million is not current, it's spread out over that time period.
Right, and I knew it wasn't current. I think it would be good if we knew what the total cost anticipation would be. That would be nice to know. So what is the financial impact the village would incur to the town if you do not consolidate? Is that in your calculations? So I'm assuming there are some costs that you would have to pay the town in regards to their upgrades and whatever you're doing here, or not doing. We know that the engineering fee for the joint study was approximately 50,000. How much does the village owe, or have you already paid, the engineering firm that you hired? And you've mentioned they're supposed to speak at the next meeting, correct? So all we're looking for here is some information, some transparency, and some accountability. That's all we're looking for, guys, as a taxpayer. I already asked you if there was a date that you needed to notify. In your 2019-20 budget, there's a line that reflects an $86,505 payment for a serial bond principal. Does this relate to a new $5 million bond? If so, when was this bond issued? If the bond was not issued, how can the $86,000 be included in the sewer fund budget? Wouldn't you need a bond anticipation note? So we're looking for you to give us some information so we can understand this. So based on the full magnitude of this project, that has not been very well disclosed to the residents to allow for input, it seems that the village wastewater treatment plant is not financially sustainable without continued borrowing from the general fund or continually putting the village in more debt by obtaining bonds thereby raising the sewer fee again substantially and raising village taxes. So I believe, meaning hopefully the village residents, would be better served by consolidation and any future multimillion dollar project could be allocated to 50,000 people versus 2,300. And I'm confused as to the delay in resolving this whole issue. So thank you.
Just, I've got to speak to some of that real quick, around the two years. So the report from the engineers, from both engineers and all the data that we had to collect to make decisions, it's only been about six months. So, and referring to you saying it's a big, big decision, a multimillion dollar decision, that's why it takes some time to talk, go through it, and continue to talk. I've been in constant talks with the town, and they are aware that soon there'll be a decision made. And we just want to make sure we make the right decision and get all the facts, so... But I assure you, it is coming soon.
Did you want to submit that? Did you want me to say that?
Sure.
Hello.
Hello.
Larry Macho, 204 London Road. What did I say? I'd like to share my thoughts on the consideration of either keeping or consolidating the village wastewater treatment plant with the town. From purely a financial perspective, the clear choice here is to consolidate. I would also argue that the town of Webster plays and needs to play a more active role in that decision. And I think that they should take some more when you consider the opportunity to consolidate. I hope that the attorney at the end, Mr. White, could help us ensure that a financial solution for all of the Webster residents are in play. Not just the grant money that we might get from the government, which ends up going to the town, and not just the debt load that the village residents might continue to keep after it goes to the town. This, you don't see a whole lot of, well, in fact, you don't see anybody from the town here, and there's a reason for that. And I don't know what it is anymore than Bob knows why we couldn't get some information.
When you say, when you say from the town, do you mean the town board and the town supervisor? They have a meeting going on right now.
It's not, can I continue? Is that a question?
Hold on.
Well, no, it's a statement.
All right, well, let me finish my statement. I only get five minutes. Again?
Finish, we'd like to hear what you've got to say, please.
Thank you, Jay. Let me try to figure out where I was here. So, my point is, whether it's tonight, Mr. White, or most any other night that we've talked about yet at the village, have you seen anybody from the town here? Occasionally you get John, but he's in the village. So my point is, I don't think that, even though I feel very strongly that we should consolidate, I don't feel that we should consolidate unless there is agreements from the town to make it good for everybody in the community. All right? I don't think you're doing a bad job in delaying. I'm just, you know, a little bit upset that I don't know what you're thinking. But I'm coming to the conclusion, and I was telling Bob tonight, I spent a lot of time looking at the 2011 comprehensive plan. I don't know if that's a draft or the latest one. It's beautiful. Now, some things needed to be updated, but for the most part, it's good. I have some excerpts here, I won't read them, because you know what's in that plan. But I can tell you, the right thing to do for the village in the comprehensive plan is to consolidate, but only if it's in the best interest of the village residents. And I think there's some due diligence that has to be done, and I'd like to hear something from the town to step to the plate, to stop hiding behind all the legalities of what is what is right and wrong legality-wise, what's right for everybody in this in this village and in the town. And then, if you do the right thing here, what ends up happening is the village will end up having more financial freedom that we can put towards the historical society and building economic development here in our little village, which keeps us unique in a community. Thank you.
I also want to comment on that, if you don't mind. And I think when we talk about why it's taking so long is because of exactly what you just said, we are advocating for the village. So we want to make sure that we are thought of and it's not all this way. And I do like the word "community" because that's obviously, when I grew up, it was Webster, it wasn't the town, it wasn't the village, it was just Webster. So another thing is this whole board doesn't care about the village, so we have...
And quite honestly, we're the only ones that are pointing.
So thank you for that.
We're all on the same team.
Yep.
Anyone else?
I've been a village resident, I think, probably as long or longer than anybody here. I personally hate to see the sewer plant go unless you can show me it's going to save me money. If it's going to turn out that I can stay cheaper with the village sewer plant, that's the way I want to go, definitely. We got, and look at the long run solution, not going to save me money next year, but going to save me money over, well, for me, probably more than about 15 years. I'm hoping for at least that anymore, being a longtime resident. So I agree with the point. I haven't seen, maybe there's been a lot of discussions between the town and the village, but nobody's heard about them. And I think the public should know more about what's going on. You've apparently been to the town and heard their side of the story, but their side of the story isn't coming back here. That we know about. So I'd like this, like I say, see the sewer plant stay if it's shown that it can save us money in the long run. I know not all the figures are there, and there's a lot of question about Xerox. My experience with companies going out of business, we look at Kodak, they're downsized tremendously, but I know buildings at Kodak that are not occupied and used and producing sewage of some type or another. Maybe what they, not what they produced before, but maybe more or less. Xerox, once the buildings are empty a while, my experience at Weir's Co-op is that nobody wants to buy the building when it first goes empty. They want the company that owns it to suffer for a year, a year and a half, because that drives the price down because it costs a lot of money to maintain an empty building. Almost as much as it costs to maintain a full building. So once Xerox has buildings set empty for a year or two, you're going to see a lot of people looking at those buildings because the cost of occupying will come down tremendously. So that answers the Xerox question. The risk currently, if you've got the paper today, you see the thing that was presented to the village board last meeting by this, by our Economic Development, yeah, Economic Development Committee that is looking into grants and that that will bring Xerox back in some form, not as Xerox, but as a development area, and put a use to most of the buildings, any that can be redeveloped. So I don't think we have to worry too much. I don't think Xerox would set empty for very long. A year, maybe two at the most, and those buildings will be occupied. There's a lot of businesses, smaller businesses in Rochester area that are looking for property constantly, but they have to wait till the price is right. I thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. White. And I will close the public comment portion of the meeting. We will move to regular board business. How do you left those questions up here? Did you have any, Larry, that you wanted to leave, any questions that you had?
Yeah, the only, you know, I started, I started the asking at the end. Thank you for asking, Gerald. I come up with a question as much as a comment that I just wanted to reinforce, is that, I mean, you know, much like this gentleman just shared, that we shouldn't be worried that, you know, in the event that Xerox continued to downsize, that it wouldn't be refilled. I believe that full-heartedly. I think that's a great point. And I would ask the village board to not be nervous, not be nervous that if we don't have the wastewater treatment plant in Webster Village, that we don't have a village. It comes, that decision, though, to consolidate, if we go down that path, has got to be a partnership with that town, with our town, to make it financially feasible for everybody to win. And then let's take that money and continue to do the great work that we've seen. This village looks 10 times better than it did 10 years ago. It used to be a ghost town. Can you imagine what we can do if we didn't have to worry about that wastewater treatment plant and we didn't get stuck with a whole bunch of debt on top of it? It would, it would, it should open up some of the financial purse strings to allow us to do some of the other stuff that's in that comprehensive plan. I just wanted to reinforce something.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will move now to village board business, and first is a resolution to approve the public in July 23.
Yeah.
You had a chance to get those over?
Yep. I'll make that, make that motion.
I'll second that.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Alita?
Aye.
Trustee Delkane?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Second item is a item to resolution to approve the claims and warrants. I know that
I didn't have any questions, I moved over.
And, I'm sure, Lancy?
You did, you had a question. We talked about, we discussed, but Jake's not here, so, you know. We can bring them up with him when he comes back. The trees, a couple of big bills on there.
But that's, but he talked about that in several meetings, that that's what he was doing, and we approved it. So, yeah, well, all the various trees. And we approved that sometime ago. Yeah. So I didn't have a question, since we approved it.
I said it's very expensive.
Too expensive, yeah.
Well, I only, I think what June is trying to say is you approved it.
Yeah.
I got you, too. Yeah, if he didn't do that ash treatment, it cost us way more later.
Oh, yes, I thought he had gotten such a great deal. He really did, compared to the cost of everything.
But then, they're planting those trees, they were planting a bunch of trees for 6,000, over $6,000 for 14 trees.
Yep.
I don't know why, I don't know why we don't do it ourselves. I don't know why, I mean, we have the manpower and the equipment, why we don't do it ourselves?
No, they don't have the equipment to do that at home.
To plant a tree? What do you?
What do you think these guys do, sit around doing?
No, but we have the equipment, we have the manpower, you have summer health.
Do you have some time that you could help them out?
I would love to. I'd love to.
Some of the trees, they couldn't do their own because they are relatively small. They're
Thanks, Larry.
You're welcome. Anybody else have a question on the bills? If not, I want to take a motion to approve them.
I'll make that one.
No, seconded.
Trustee Delkane?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Alita?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, you can see the financial statements for July. There are a number of, well, there aren't too many actually, which is good, items that are in the red, and however the money that they're in the red buys is pretty significant in comparison to those that are well in the black, so. Any questions at all in the financial?
I don't.
Next, we have a secret resolution on the Village of Webster Board of Trustees, continue the adoption of Local Law Number One. And I would like to regat regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Webster, Monroe County, on the 8th day of August 2019 at 7:00 PM. There were present, and it lists those except that Carl is not here. Following resolution is offered for adoption. Whereas pursuant to the New York Village Law Section 7, 700, the Board of Trustees is empowered to adopt local laws regulating the local location and the use of building structures and land for trade, industry, residence, and other purposes. And whereas this board has been presented with and has introduced a draft local law titled, quote, "General and specific requirements for wireless communications facilities", unquote. And whereas a public hearing on the matter was held by the Webster Village Board on July 27, 2019, at 7:30 PM, and whereas all interested persons were heard, and whereas a short form environmental assessment form was proposed, for the proposed action was prepared and submitted to the village board and reviewed by the village board, whereas the village board has reviewed and discussed the short form environmental assessment form, and whereas the village board has considered the related long-term, short-term, and cumulative effects of the environment, including simultaneously or subsequent actions which are likely to be undertaken as a result of this proposed action, whereas the village board has assessed the significance of likely consequence, whether they be material, substantial, large, or important as a result of the proposed action. Whereas the village board specifically considered Part Two of the environmental assessment form regarding the project's impacts and their magnitude in land, water, air plants, animals, agricultural land resources, aesthetic resources, historic resources, archaeological resources, open space, recreation, transportation, energy, noise, order of what helped grow and character of the community or neighborhood. Whereas the village board considered the probability of an impact occurring, the duration of the impact, the permanency of the impact, and the control of an impact, local needs, local gains, and objections related to the impact. Therefore, the end result, the proposed action is classified as an enlisted action under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act. The Webster Village Board is the lead agency. In receiving the short form EAF based upon all information available to the board, it concludes that there is no potential large probability of an environmental impact occurring. And the village board finds that the proposed action will not result in any significant environmental impacts. The village board also finds that the proposed action will establish appropriate developmental controls and land use policies. The village board of the Village of Webster determines that the proposed amendment action to amend the local zoning law may not have a significant adverse environmental impact, and a draft environmental impact statement will not be required to be prepared. Superintendent of Public Works of the Village of Webster is to give any notices that may be required by the Environmental Quality Review Act for this action. In light of that, I would call for a motion to do we put this to a vote?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Alita?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Delkane?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, we have a resolution to adopt Local Law Number One of 2019 of the Village of Webster entitled "General and specific requirements for wireless communications facilities". of the Village of Webster entitled "General and specific requirements for wireless communications facilities." At the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Webster, Monroe County, New York, held at the Community Meeting Hall, 29 South Avenue, the Village of Webster, New York, on the eighth day of August, 2019. The following resolution is offered for adoption. Whereas pursuant to New York Village Law 7-700, the Board of Trustees is empowered to adopt local laws regulating the location and use of building structures and the land for trade, industry, residence, and other purposes. And whereas this board has been presented with and has introduced a draft local law titled, quote, "General and specific requirements for wireless communications facilities," unquote. And whereas by resolution dated June 27, 2019, the Village Board of the Village of Webster has established a date time and place for a public hearing to consider enacting a law, local law, with respect to amending Chapter 175 of the Code of the Village of Webster to establish certain general and specific requirements for wireless communications facilities. And whereas a notice of this public hearing was published in the Webster Herald and was posted on the Village Bulletin Board of the Village of Webster, 28 West Main Street, Rochester, New York. And whereas a public hearing was held by the Webster Village Board of Trustees on July 25, 2019, and whereas all interested persons were heard. And whereas notices and all referrals as required by law to be given and made have been given and made. And whereas, in accordance with Sections 20, 239-AM and 239-N of Article 12-B of the New York State General Municipal Law, the proposed action was referred by the Village of Webster to the Monroe County Department of Planning and Development. And whereas the Monroe County Department of Planning and Development returned the referral without comments. And whereas this action is an enlisted action of the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act. And whereas the village board has determined this action will not have any significant impact upon the environment. And whereas it is in the interest of the public to enact the proposed amendment to the local zoning law, now therefore be enacted by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Webster, this local law, the one. This local law shall take effect, I believe it's 20 days?
Well, actually, at the very end, Heather, on page 27, you should put it, the local law will take effect, assuming it passes today. It will be today's date, but it actually doesn't take effect until it's filed. It takes effect upon filing with the Secretary of State, and the village clerk has, within 20 days, is supposed to send it up to the Secretary of State, so... You put today's date, but it'll actually be whenever the Secretary of State gets the local law.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So for now, we can just put this in?
For, for now, just, you know, it's today's date.
August 25, 2019. Do I have a motion to accept this local law?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Sorry, I just want a second.
Take your time.
Thank you. So sorry about that. I'm sorry. Thank you. I just want to make sure I got all your notes. Thank you. Okay. Trustee Bucking?
Aye.
Trustee Alita?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byrnes?
Aye.
Well, I think that we're one of the first in Monroe County to enact a local law to control, like, the...
Oh, violation.
Yeah, that's, hats off on that. That's awesome.
Absolutely.
I would like to read...
I don't think you need to read through this entire thing on this one, I really don't. I think if you read on this next one...
The next one?
Oh, Lang...
If you read Local Law Number Two, if that, this section here, is good. Gives a lot of information, just that.
Well, now, I have to give the seeker first, but I'll just read it.
You don't need to read the whole thing. Essentially, it's a Type II action.
For seeker?
Yeah. Which by definition doesn't require any environmental review.
I'll...
Because it's simply installation of traffic control devices, no parking signs right there.
So, the next item is a seeker resolution concerning the adoption of Local Law Number Two of 2019. "The parking prohibited at all times," it's entitled. And at regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Webster, Monroe County, New York, held at the Community Meeting Hall, 29 South Avenue, the Village of Webster, New York, on the eighth day of August, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. The following resolution was offered, and I read what that was. It is the adoption of Local Law Number Two of 2019. The proposed action is classified as a Type II action under New York, under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act. And by definition, it is deemed to not have significant impact on the environment and is otherwise precluded from environmental review under the Environmental Conservation Law. May I have a motion to approve and a second?
This is in regards to the addition of no parking? Upon Lion Drive, Kircher Park, and Baker Street?
That is correct.
So that just so everybody understands what we're talking about.
I guess that was the entitled law, the, um... The addition of no parking areas on Lion Drive, Kircher Park, and Baker Street. And those are at the curves of both of those streets and on parallel to the 104. Right.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Bucking?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Alita?
Aye.
Mayor Byrnes?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Now, I, agenda item number five is a dot resolution to adopt Local Law Number Two of 2019, which is to amend Section 156-41 of the Village Code entitled "Parking Prohibited at All Times" with respect to certain portions of Lion Drive, Kircher Park, and Baker Street. And I'm not quite sure how much I need to read in this. Local Law Number Two of 2019 of the Village of Webster entitled "The Addition of No Parking Areas on Lion Drive, Kircher Park, and Baker Street," enacting amendments to Chapter 156. The local law shall become effective upon filing with the Secretary of State. The Superintendent of Public Works will be directed to install any signage necessary to identify and delimit, delineate the additional no parking areas. A copy of this resolution, local law, shall be published once in the Webster Herald, and an affidavit of such publication shall be filed with the village clerk. Just so that the people know where this parking prohibition will be. It is at Lion Drive, both sides. Location at the east end of Lion Drive, for a distance of 165 feet west of the west right-of-way line of Baker Street, is extended to intersect the center line of Lion Drive. At the west end of Lion Drive, for a distance of 130 feet east of the east right-of-way line of Kircher Park, is extended to intersect the center line of Lion Drive. So we would also add at Kircher Park, a distance of 90 feet south of the south edge of the bike path along Route 104. And on Baker Street, both sides, for a distance of 130 feet south of the south edge of the bike path along Route 104. Do I have a motion to adopt this local law?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Trustee Alita?
Aye.
Trustee Bucking?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byrnes?
Aye.
I think that's all the phone, is this here? And we have the board, but Don, I return this over to you. Do you have anything to report to us?
Um, I didn't have... I believe that the planning board did have a meeting, and there was approval for... There was. Tables standing along their front and on the west side. That extended down to just grass areas and not into the parking? No, it was just the existing grass area. It's only about 15 feet down the side of the building. It's 10 tables, four chairs each. It was conditioned upon a minimum five-foot landscape buffer at the end of the, on the side of the, of the side.
I don't believe that our Department of Public Works had anything to present to us this evening. I would ask that you take a moment of silence. Jake and the family lost, well, Jake lost his mother-in-law just this, just this week. So, let's take a moment, please, in silence and in that... Thank you. I'm sure it's a loss to the family, the whole...
Mayor Byrnes?
Sorry, I did have a message from Jake. He just said thank you so much for your understanding. And he said that if you had any questions, just to make sure, you can send an email. There was any, any answer to talk to him today.
I believe that would mean that there's also nothing necessarily from Sure other than those things that we're considering at the moment. Our next meeting of the village board will be August 22, 2019. At that time, I believe that we will be hearing from Mr. Baker, B and L, as well as answering questions from them. And the public... Does anybody have anything to add, or anybody to discuss? If not, then I would ask that, in objection, that this meeting of our estate, 2019, needs to close. Do I have a motion to close the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Alan Baker?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all for coming.